Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I just, I have too many things plugged into this computer and I never know which one's gonna work on which platform.
And it sounds like a couple of folks are having technical difficulties connecting, so it is, my, my computer is showing 1 o'clock now, but it might just be a few more minutes before we formally open the meeting. Thanks for your patience.
And then, what's up?
I'm for the coordination.
Yes. Okay, and those of you who maybe joined after, and I need to open my full screen, I can see all, Commissioner Marcel is having some technical difficulties getting online, but she should be on her way, so if you give us just a few more minutes, we'll formally open the meeting and get started. And I do think we have a request to move the last item to the first so that Jonathan Sheamus and Judge Sheamus can join us and go along with his docket, which I don't see any problem entertaining, but just to give everyone fair warning, will be a little shift. I thought it would be a problem. All right, Commissioner Marcela, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Excellent. All right, good afternoon. Commissioners, are we ready to start then?
Yes.
Good deal. Okay, let's see, it's 1:04, we are here for the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, moved from yesterday due to the 4th of July holiday, and we will open and get started. First, I have approval of the agenda, and there, I did get a request to move item number seven to our first agenda item. That item is the conversation, oops, actually, I'm sorry, yes, with the, with Judge Sheamus in the courts for the courthouse front entry concierge. So I propose to move that item to number one and bump everything else down. Do we have any other changes or revisions to the agenda, Commissioners?
None for me, thank you.
No.
Okay. All right, great, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, moving item seven to number one.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, and I will post that in our chat here. All right, next we have community informational items. Commissioner Marcela, do you have anything for us today?
Um, no, today, I think the only thing I have is just wanted to say thank you to the staff at the airport, Michael Irwin, Mabel Bogart, and the volunteers over the weekend to, who helped with the airport barbecue, it was a huge success, so thank you for all your hard work and dedication to making that happen.
Definitely, I'll second that. Commissioner Fiedler?
Uh, no, none for me.
Okay, I, I'd just like to mention the community wildfire protection planning process, and tomorrow there's a Forest Health Council meeting from 2:00 to 4:30. We'll get that revised on our planner and posted for folks to look up on the website. Let's see, and we're opening, as one of our agenda items, opening our, our master plan documents today, so we are moving along. Moving right along, organizing a team to review those next week, and moving forward with much needed and requested recreation planning overall, so that is all I have, let's see. Now we go into public comments, do we have any public comment from anybody joining us today regarding items not on the agenda? I don't think I see any hands up. All right, it doesn't look like we have any public comments. Okay, with that, hearing no, no interest for public comments, we'll move into our new business, and because of the amended agenda, number one now is our conversation on courthouse front entry concierge, thanks for joining us, Judge Sheamus. And
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Anyway, I've got Mandy with me and also Judge Choret is here as well. So my hope is Sylvista is ready to move forward, they have someone who is ready to serve as a concierge two days a week, and so we just need to go over whatever logistical arrangements we need to make to ensure that this is going to be successful. And so, I don't know questions you all have, and this is an opportunity for Sylvista to kind of convey what they believe their needs are in order for this to be successful. Part of it is also then, do we want to have some formal process to advertise this, do we want a slower, softer opening for the project and just work that way, all those kinds of questions, but it certainly makes sense to have dialogue to work through those issues.
Great. Um, have we heard any logistical needs so far to respond to, or Mandy, do you wanna kinda go ahead and give us the list, please? Thank you.
Yeah, we really just need a touchdown space, I mean, we would come equipped with computer. Ideally, we'd have some wireless or internet connection, but we could also test out a brick option, if that's, if that's needed, I think that the individual who would be doing the concierge position already has been assigned a brick for other crisis type work, so really it's matter, it's just a matter of figuring out where the touchdown spot is and then making it happen.
Okay, and so do we remind maybe the board of where we landed? Was it with kind of setting up a more formal table space that was more permanent in the entryway or the hallway? We kinda do have a couple of other options potentially in what used to be kind of the reception area or office in that front hallway. Where have you all landed as far as what we think would be most helpful for the community?
I think our biggest question was whether or not the security was going to move downstairs, because we weren't wanting to set up shop directly next to security, I think that was our, our main request.
And did we wanna do that before or after having to go through security?
I mean, there are two schools of thought, one is if we want to make this receptive to especially individuals who may not feel comfortable being in a more secure space for whatever reason, then to have it outside of security makes some logical sense. At the same time, if proximity is for security, but in earshot of that, my guess is some people may also feel a level of privacy concern that needs to be addressed as well, and so my sense is it may be a work in progress, depending on how open the BOCC is as to, we could set it since there is no security down in that reception area, we can start there, and if it moves, then we can reassess if that does make the most sense. I mean, the good news about this is hopefully whatever we have is something that's movable enough that if we do need to make any adjustments, it should be hopefully a pretty easy process to do that. Other questions which we also at some point want to address is although there'll be a live person there two days a week, do we want to make arrangements for a terminal to be available where someone can be accessible by WebEx or just some of the technology or access points might be available in the same location even if it isn't physically manned? I think there's certainly some appeal to that, but then that would raise a few other issues, both in terms of security and other things, as to if you have a monitor or a computer screen somewhere, it needs to be something that people just can't walk off with if they chose to.
Um, Commissioner, I mean, I, yeah, I think we have all a few choices, and I don't know if we have an update on the timeline, Commissioner Marcela, do you have an update on the timeline of the install of the security?
No, so, um, the last bit of information that I had on the install of the security system is that the x-ray machine arrived to us and it was not in working order, and so it was returned until we could get a new one in, and there was not an ETA on when that was going to arrive. Was the last that I, I knew about that, but I can check in with the sheriff's office to see if they have an estimated ETA, because we wanted to potentially plan for some public information and public communication about what to expect when you're visiting the courthouse with any kind of new security as you walk through those front doors to get into any county office and not just up into the courts.
Right. Um, I mean, it kinda seems like we'd have to either way, slice it, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily seem like a table in that foyer space is super ideal to be right next to what we anticipate being the security.
Sorry, Sarah, I didn't mean to cut you off, I think, um, you know, the, the security feature will be kind of routed through those two doors closest to the BOCC room, and so it'll leave a lot of that space in that foyer area, because that will all be kind of like chained off, I guess, if you will, at those other sets of doors, I think it will have to be able to figure out how to make that work with the fire marshal in terms of egress access, just because I think that still needs to be, you know, the way out, so I just don't know logistically how big you could actually fit something in there.
Okay, and then we do have, I mean, the BOCC room could be available, we could organize that or that that other space that's currently being utilized as a break room that used to have an open window. We could possibly take down the cork board that's covering that open space unless somebody and move the, the, right in front of it right now are all the pamphlets and the newspaper. We could move all of that so that it's easy, more easily accessible?
Yeah, there's, there's a, I don't think that anything in that space is permanent, so I think that you just remove that front facing attachment, and then I think it's fine from there.
Should we?
I kinda like that idea better.
Do, I, I, do we need to leave that though as a designated, like nursing room, or am I confusing what room's talking about?
It, it is attached to the designated breastfeeding room, we'd have to find a different location. Mandy, Judge Sheamus, do you you might not be able to visualize what we're talking about, but would you like to meet someone down there and look at that shortly, or?
Sure, that would be great.
Okay, all right, and then other, Mandy, I think we can get, you know, have you meet with Amit's or IT staff so that you are sure to have access and, and login for the wifi, Paul, I see your hand up just one second. And also, we might have that staff person get a key card entry to come in and have access. But Paul, what, do you have a question? You're muted, Paul?
Yeah. I am trying to alleviate my ignorance. What, what is the purpose of concierge?
Um, I can answer that if you'd like. So basically, the idea is that anyone in the county who has a need for any resources or services that exist in the county have a go-to place and a person who can help them figure out where to go, how to make an appointment. At times, if they are making that appointment, maybe even to do initial assessments. For my purposes, if they're, if they are court involved and they don't need to be court involved, rather than just give generic sentences such as get an evaluation, I could send them to this person, they can set up the appointment, and the likelihood of them being able to follow up is going to be significantly higher than if we do it the way we do now, which is just hope they figure it out on their own and hope for the best.
Yeah, I would agree, I think we just wanna reduce barriers to accessing resources, accessing behavioral health resources, and improve just overall knowledge of, of what's available to them to hopefully reduce, you know, any type of legal involvement whatsoever.
And in addition, even if they're not from the area, part of the partnership is with the Colorado Bar Association, which has worked at a resource database, so if someone has some, some need here, but they happen to live outside of the county, they also can access those services from, through this concierge person as well.
Thank you.
Mandy, do you have any other items that you would need? And we can kinda look, sorry, as far as space goes, we can look at that space, and Commissioners, I don't know if we have another thought, at least temporarily, for re-designating a breastfeeding room, but we can hopefully do that rather quickly.
Sarah, you know, there, there is an additional third room in the back of that, so like when you walk in from the hallway, there's that initial room that has the table in it, and then to the right is that area that you're talking about with the opening, and then in the furthest space back, it currently just has like some office supplies where if we were going to move this concierge space, then we could put, you know, those office supplies into that concierge space and then just put the necessities that we have for the breastfeeding space into that back room, because it is private.
Yeah, there's a door to that, and
Yeah.
That sounds like a great, quick solution.
Yeah, I think if we just swap those two rooms, then that should alleviate any of that.
Yes, and I would just add, you know, anytime we do anything innovative, I think this is a very innovative thing that we're doing, that we're trying, we just make sure to share early and often, so if something's not working or if something is working, then we just share early, often, and then adjust as needed, so we're really excited about this partnership, and I think it's gonna be a really amazing innovative thing that Lake County can do.
To connect our IT staff, should, should we connect them directly with you, Mandy?
That'd be great.
Okay. We can do that. Um, anything else that you need, Mandy?
Not that I can think of, thank you so much.
Okay, and the ideal timeframe to start, somebody is ready to start, you said?
Yes, as soon as we wanna go, we're ready.
Okay, great, um, is there all, is there some messaging to share out publicly? Um, I know you were talking about internally kind of, you know, sharing what's working and not working and how to best, better serve. Is there some other messaging?
I, I would think we'd want some kind of announcement through the county website. Make an announcement as opposed to local media, so there were and anything beyond that, just so people in the community are aware of the service, and to make sure that information is provided by, in both Spanish and English, I think all would be really helpful.
Yeah.
We can get that, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't hear Judge Chrotas, but will you, will you take the lead on trying to plug that in Wednesday morning coffee, maybe get it out through, I don't know, school district, you know, communication methods perhaps?
Sure, the more people who know about it, the more effective it's gonna be, since more people will then take advantage of the service.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll do our best to, to continue to promote and message the, the availability as well. Well, I'm happy to connect you with a meet, Mandy, and then we can look at that space. I can also chat with Michael Irwin here who's, might be listening. And we can kind of arrange with maintenance, trying to look at that space and organize and get it, get it ready for what we think we need.
Great.
Great.
All right.
Now, thanks so much, I mean, this is something which the entire state is looking to try to implement something similar to this. All across the state, we're among the first to do this, which is really exciting, and so at a statewide basis, they're all anticipating how successful we're gonna be, and so I really appreciate all of the supports and support of the Commissioners to allow us the ability to try this out.
Absolutely, and, and as you were talking, Judge Sheamus, I was wondering, is this person also gonna maybe hop over to City Hall and spend some time there, or are we just funneling them to one location, does that add a little bit of confusion, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think additionally, just trying to keep it a little simple, but if it turns out to be an evolving need for expanding, nothing precludes the conversation.
Very good, all right, well, thanks for joining us today, really.
Thanks so much.
Yep, Mandy, I'll get that out to you by the end, well, in the next few hours after the meeting.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to item number two, and we have the bid openings for our Recreation Master Plan RFP that has been posted. We've got six bids that we've received, let me work on sharing my screen. Amber, while I am pulling that up, would you just give us a very brief overview of the process that you've utilized so far and the interest and the communication that's happened?
Yeah, absolutely, um, so I think with the closure of the Aquatic Center, we've identified that there's a need to take a step back and look really broadly at community priorities around recreation and make sure we really understand those and have an updated plan for how to go forward and tackle those, those needs and wants in our community. So we, myself and Recreation Advisory Board have been moving this Recreation Master Planning process forward, we issued this RFP, I think it was the week of June 7, so we gave bidders up five weeks to turn around and submit a bid. Obviously, today is the opening, and then a team comprised of staff and Advisory Board members will review those over the next week to come up with a recommendation on which contractor should be awarded this bid, and then the BOCC will be awarding those on July 19, and then we would really like to kick this progress, project up in August. As soon as possible.
Excellent. Um, all right, so with that, part of our process is opening all the bids that we have received, as we had said, and so the first one here, we have design concepts, and this is their, some of these do not have two documents, but this looks like they're a fee schedule here. Amber, do you wanna explain a little bit for us some of the ad alternate requests that we had asked for? ad alternate requests that we had asked for?
Yeah, absolutely. So the body of the RFP really asked for a Recreation Master Plan that included a variety of items, including facility assessments and community surveying and cost recovery and some of those types of things. And then as an ad alternate, we had also asked vendors if they were interested to bid on three additional items. So one was like a full cost recovery strategy for the department. The second was a facility maintenance management plan. And the third was a grounds maintenance management plan. So you can see those in this, in this bid that you have on the screen. They're listed below in blue. So we've got one price above, that's for the actual master plan. And then these, these items underneath in blue are those that we could pick or choose to add to our project or to add none of them to our project.
Okay. All right, so again, we have, okay, well, then go through the six that we got. Amber, if you want to help me keep track, make sure that I hit all six. We have design concepts. And we have their proposed budget not to exceed $99,890. With those ad alternates, as you just mentioned, listed below. Statistically, valid parks and recreation survey at $18,500. Facilities Maintenance Management Plan at $5,000 to $10,000. And a ground maintenance management plan in a range of $2,500 to $5,000. Moving on, we have.
Could you zoom in just a little bit on the document?
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, wonderful. That's so much better. Thanks.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. It's good.
Do you need me to stay there for a second, Kayla?
No, 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 I'm good. I just was having a little trouble seeing the optional tasks, but that's great. I got it.
All right, I'll try to, I'll try to zoom in on the next, the next, the rest of them. All right, we have design workshops. And let's see, this is the first time I'm going through these two. So this is always a bit clunky to find, but here we go. We've got a total fees from design workshops of $99,990 and an optional scope project branding and website, $8,500. It looks like the ad alternate fees. Project branding and website, as I just said, $8,500. Facility Maintenance Management Plan, $12,000. Grounds Maintenance Management Plan, $12,000. And department fee policy, $8,000. Okay, so this is the same company?
Yeah, this is the proposal.
And. Okay, sorry. I don't know if this is insurance. I think I went too far.
It might be at the bottom, Sarah.
There we go. Okay, we have our master plan total, $100,000. And then our ad alternates. The first facility maintenance management plan at $15,000. The second ground maintenance management planned at $15,000. And the third departmental fee philosophy, $10,000. And that was with.
This is DTJ, Sarah.
DTJ Design. Sorry, I've got the Zoom. I don't know if you can see me trying to. All right, and then this one, this would be our, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4th with Norris Design. And let's see, we have.
There isn't a separate document, Sarah.
I was noticing that.
This might be your next tab.
Okay. So we have Norris Design Project Fee Schedule totaling $167,800. And then we have the optional add-ons Facility Maintenance Management Plan at $12,000. The Grounds Maintenance Management Plan at $12,000. And the Departmental Fee Philosophy at $8,000. We have Green Play LLC who submitted a bid. And. There, what's that?
I was going to say they also submitted two documents, but you have already done it.
I'm getting, I'm catching on here. So their total is $99,790. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Their first total for the core work is $89,290. And then their add-on option one for facilities and grounds maintenance management plan is $5,250. And their add-on option two for department fee policy is $5,250. And then our last proposal is from the SE Group. And. Let me make this bigger. And I think that there's one fee proposal. I'm not sure I see alternates. And that total is $99,870.
So Sarah, this one, actually, there's a third document. So there's an additional services proposal. The Facility Maintenance Management Plan is proposed at $12,000. The Grounds Maintenance Management Plan is proposed at $12,000. And the departmental fee policy is proposed at $8,000.
Okay. Sorry about that. I don't know why it switched. Okay.
Oh, there it is.
Is this it?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay. Excellent. All right, well, we are scheduled to, you are arranging that review and the committee to discuss the proposals received. And we will look forward to your recommendations at our next regular meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments or questions before we move on?
No, I just think it's really great. We have so many bids for that. That's super cool. So thank you for doing that, Amber.
Yeah, absolutely. I was really excited to see that many come in as well. So that was really great. And I know she's not on this meeting, but a big thanks to Jody Enderlin. She's on the Recreation Advisory Board. And she did all the pre-application meetings with me, with all these vendors. And we had multiple meetings with some vendors. So she, she gave us a really good chunk of her free time to meet with these folks and talk to them about our community and our project and make sure that these bids really reflect what we're looking for. Thanks, Jody.
Yeah.
I had one quick question, maybe just for members of the public listening to, like, what, could you give us a quick overview of the timeline? Like, so when might we select someone? And what's the timeline that, you know, for finishing the master plan work and then beginning to think about, you know, acting on implementing any of the recommendations or priority steps coming out of that? What, what, what timeline are we looking at there?
Yeah, so we should be back to you at your July 19 meeting with a recommendation for a contractor. And after that, we have put an August 1 start date. It's what we put in the RFP. I have not looked at these documents yet. So it'll be interesting to see what these contractors say in terms of timeline. Like, can they start August 1? Are we looking at their proposing September, whatever that might look like? We did also ask this to be completed within a nine to 12 month window. So that'll also be something else we need to look at further, you know, as we get into bids, like what kind of timeline are vendors proposing? Because I think based on our pre-application meetings, some folks felt like nine months was not enough to do this and do it well. So it'll just be interesting, I think, to see what's proposed. But I would say no longer than a year from the start date, we should be complete. And then I think depending on what the priorities and objectives are that come out of this master plan, that'll really determine our, our next steps. Although, if I had to guess at this point, largely, those will be discussions around how to find what is proposed in this plan.
I think it'll also be really helpful because there'll be some, you know, I've gone through some funding requests for other really large priorities across the county. And hopefully, at the point of conclusion in kind of assessing the rec and some other facilities, we'll have landed kind of in a better environment to determine how we can move forward and what we can allocate. And we might even, that might even inform this process as we go along to some extent. But I think, I think it all is, seems like really, really good kind of weaving of the timing between everything. We can hope. All right, thank you so much, Amber.
Yeah, thank you.
Really exciting. Okay, great. And moving on to our next agenda item. So we have an agreement drafted with the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District. This is an agreement to work together to develop a plan. I did bring this to the board for brief discussion some time ago. Chris Floyd, our legal, has reviewed it. We've responded without seeing a response yet from Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District on the details of that. But I'd love to ask the board for an approval of the document conditioned on final legal terms and, and certainly open and want to discuss kind of that reimbursement agreement and any cap that we are comfortable with while we kind of map this out together with the district. We're coming up, we know, we're reviewing our our decree, we're reviewing some developing procedural things with the enterprise. And so I'm happy to hear any thoughts and entertain, you know, ceiling to discuss with the district as we formalize and finalize, I hope, the agreement. But the agreement, the most important thing is that once the agreement, you know, once we have the agreement and we keep moving and I can continue to communicate with them and push, move these things forward, though they have their own big water projects going on themselves. We think that that'll be a five to six month turnaround before we have a plan and would be ready to accept applications on behalf of Lake County for the augmentation plan. Any questions or different, you know, revisiting kind of?
Sarah, did you want to put that up on your screen? Or I think just in looking at that, did we, in order for us to move it forward, do we need to make those determinations to fill in? Like, the total cost, which shall not exceed blank amount? Do we need to make those kinds of determinations today? Or do you have a proposal for, for those potential fees?
I'd prefer to make a decision on what we, you know, hope that ceiling, to cap that ceiling at today. I think that'd be really helpful for moving forward. But some of the other things were kind of details on, you know, a net 30 versus a 28 and whether or not, you know, those kind of details. So I don't think there were huge. I'm sorry, I'm working to pull this up. I apologize, guys. I need to get a clean copy to pull up here.
Commissioner Mudge, do you need my help? I had sent, I just sent the markup. If you need, I can try to create a clean copy quickly from the markup if you want.
Um, I. Well. Okay, I just did it. Thank you for the offer. All right, can y'all see this here? Okay, agreement regarding 98 CW173 Administration Study. And so we have this in conjunction with the Water District and their enterprise. I have this bug in my Zoom room flying around. Here's the fee schedule. Submitting monthly invoices for reimbursement. And I think, I mean, we could potentially start at, you know, looking at perhaps a $10,000 cap. And once we are approaching with some monthly invoices and monthly updates and progress reports, we can kind of revisit that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I mean, I was just going to say, two questions. And sorry for not catching, you know, the, getting this earlier to sort some of this out before our meeting. But I, I have no idea what a reasonable amount of time is. And I'm not trying to like cheapskate on the agreement. I just sort of want it not to be open-ended. So I'm, one thing, and I'd be willing to just have a discussion with UAE. You know, and, you know, I, again, not, not trying to like drive this to a low number. Just want it to be a realistic number that, you know, gets flagged if it's rushing towards it. I mean, in my experience, that's sort of, you know, you can just have a discussion if work is going, going over. And then, yeah, I just have no, I have no idea if this is like a 20-hour thing or a 200-hour thing and what the breakdown of those different categories are. And sorry, then the other question was, I don't know if we have in our current budget, is this, is this a, an itemized item in the budget discussion that that might inform what our, what, you know, what our not to exceed number might be?
We do, we have $100,000 in water and water legal, I believe. So we have, we should have that covered right now as the budget stands. Estimating 40 hours at the top hourly rate here brings us at $8,000. I have asked that question to the district to ask them what, you know, what this might look like. They just haven't put a team on the review of documents in order to give us a better answer on that. So again, I'm happy to kind of move along maybe month to month. And perhaps it makes some sense to, to just agree to the conversations over the next month or two, hoping that we can really dive in with them and they can get a better understanding of what our augmentation plan really looks like and then give us a better estimate.
This is Chris. I was going to say also, we can add a provision in that here. This is Chris. I was gonna say also, we can add a provision in that paragraph to the end of that A about, you know, that it will not exceed that whatever amount shall decide on without county consent or approval.
Okay.
And add a provision that essentially says, you know, once we know the amount, if it appears that it will be likely to exceed the approved amount, a notice provision, I don't know how much advance notice y'all want in order to have time to consider it.
I like that language. That gives us the expectation to continue the communications closely, which I think, I believe they already have. But yeah, expressing them clearly in writing.
I'll wordsmith that for you.
Yeah, and, and I think that in writing is important, just so it's not some like, you know, verbal.
Yep. Yep. Um, so with that then, do we want to put an ex amount or do we just want, what, what, where would we want to start? Or not to exceed X amount without? Well. I, I suggest $10,000.
If, if, if that seems high enough, again, I just don't know, you know, I, I don't want to create bureaucratic hurdles to get approval, but we know we're gonna bump into. But I mean, that sounds like a good place to start.
Yeah, I think I have the same opinion on that as Commissioner Fiedler, really like if that seems like an amount that's not going to end up being burdensome by, you know, taking too much time to, to go through the bureaucratic process, I think that would be an acceptable dollar amount.
Obviously, I mean, if, if, if in discussions with finalizing this with them, they're like, no, no, no way, it's gotta be X. Then let's bring it back for a quick special meeting and we can amend it to something that doesn't, you know, cause, cause problems.
Okay, so am I hearing a motion to decide on a $10,000 initial amount to propose? And should we get a alternative request from the district? Will, will entertain a special meeting to kind of adjust?
Yeah, so I will make a motion that we include in the agreement an amount not to exceed of $10,000 contingent on an agreement with the Upper Arkansas Water. Sorry, what's the, the other A's here?
Servency District.
Servency District. In agreement of that amount.
Second.
Okay, and then just, just further discussion, Chris, if you'd include kind of related to that, some of those, that notice language where it'll trigger that conversation and/or reporting, that'd be great.
Will do.
Excellent. Any other discussion, Commissioners?
None for me, thank you.
All right, I appreciate.
I'm sorry, I think just maybe to say again, you, with the motion on the table to accept the other, you know, minor recommendation, you know, clarifying recommendations from the county attorney.
Okay. In the, in the agreement in total. Okay. Great. All right, doesn't look like there's any other discussion. All of those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, and then next item number four, our Justice Task Force Engagement Proposal. So Katie Welter has been with Rocky Mountain General Counsel and is moving out on her own. Sorry, creating her own firm. She has been leading and facilitating our Justice Center conversations at great length, which we are super appreciative of, has submitted a proposal to continue that work with the county. And we have had legal review, no, no other comments to come back on what's been proposed. Katie, do you wanna say a few words? But otherwise, I, I, I believe we are, it's pretty straightforward, but I welcome you to give us.
Sure, thank you. Well, I, you know, I just, I do appreciate a chance to just say that I, it has been my real privilege to serve the county and work with Chris Floyd and Judge Seamus as co-chairs and also Chris, you know, as, as a colleague with the task force and the Justice Center project for about two years now. And, you know, I did, I did just want to share that when I came to the project, there was very, very strong groundwork laid. The task force had made the pretty irrefutable case that the current jail and courthouse are not safe and not adequate. And they also established clearly that it is the county's responsibility, statutory responsibility to remedy that condition. And so I, I started out, you know, running with, with those, that foundation kind of a clearly identified problem and responsible party, you all, and, and appreciate that you all owned up to that responsibility as well. From, from there, we've really moved forward towards creating, taking an approach to this process that's gone, includes a safe and inadequate justice system, but, or center rather, but also an improved justice system. You heard earlier, one of the fruits of that labor, which is the concept of, of a person centrally located to help our community members navigate what is just always everywhere a confusing system. And, and so I'm just, I'm really excited about the, the work we're doing. And also, you know, just say that with, with the task force help and buy-in, we, we just really opened a lot of channels of communication, including with some really key public sector figures at the state and federal level. This is a, this is just a, it's a great project with huge potential impact. And, and it, I think everybody recognizes that the county, that you all are approaching it really thoughtfully. So it, it would be an honor to continue to serve in the capacity I have been in, which is facilitator. And, and take this to what is really the next phase of, of developing the site, developing the programming. And then working on these innovations like Judge Seamus brought up with navigators and more immersive translated translator services. Just, it's, it's a pleasure and I appreciate the opportunity. And please let me know if you have any questions beyond what's, what's in the proposal itself.
Thank you, Katie.
I just wanted to chime in and just say that, that over the last more than two years now, working with Katie on this project and having served in the first go-round of this towards the, the bond initiative that unfortunately didn't, didn't pass in 2016. The leadership she's brought to this project has made all the difference in the world. So I, I would be grateful for the opportunity to keep working with her as the facilitator of the project going forward. And that way, the other thing too is I, I think the project's in a very crucial phase right now. And so trying to transition to someone else facilitating the project, I think would, would undermine the progress we've made. And so it's definitely my recommendation. And, and as you said, I've, I've reviewed the proposal, everything's set in order. And of course, we'll continue to work with Katie as co-chair of the project and also oversight as county attorney so that we make sure everything continues to go smoothly.
No, absolutely. And I, I echo that, Chris. This has been a real pleasure and a source of pride to have you leading this and facilitating this with us, Katie, and getting, getting as far as we have, although it might seem that we haven't, we haven't gotten too far, but we really have gone through a lot of diligence to, you know, prove that we are, thank you for saying, being thoughtful and really exhausting all of our resources and, and options. So, yeah, I, I personally can't thank you enough. And I, I think I speak for the board when I say that. As far as the proposal goes, just for, just to share some information, the hourly rate is proposed at $150 an hour with administrative staff at $25 an hour. And these rates are subject to change. However, in the agreement, it says that that will not happen before January 1, 2023. So thank you for that. And, and, you know, Katie brings us every month a Justice Center workforce task meeting. And I, and, and public updates and information monthly. So if anybody has any questions or wants to join those, you can just look at our planner. Any questions for Katie from the Commissioners? No.
None for me. Just thank you so much for being able to keep that group so organized. I think it's been extremely helpful with us being able to make progress. You guys.
All right.
Good thing to do.
With that, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the engagement letter with Weather, Weathervein Law and Katie Welter for continuation of Justice Center work with Lake County.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you so much, Katie.
Aye, thanks, guys.
All right, and item number five, we have Colorado, Central Colorado Conservation amended easement and land management plan agreement. I will pull this up as the, we had many work sessions to discuss with the Central Colorado Conservancy, Andrick Properties and the Sean Andrick Preserve. With about 100 acres of parcels in the southern part of the county. And since our conversation and agreement to be partners with CCC and Colorado Open Lands, who holds that easement, CCC holds and owns the land. Colorado Open Lands or COL holds the easement and the county was approached by both of those partners to help and manage the properties and develop that management plan, which will be happening over the course of the next 12 months or 11, I guess, at this point. But I will share my screen because the big change with this has been the acquisition of additional property. And so these parcels that are hashed here are the addition to the parcels that we were already presented with that are graded out. And so that adds approximately 65 acres of land. And this, this piece right here is pretty exciting as it offers contiguous space along the river. So the CCC is asking the board for the approval of this amended, the amended space. And there are no other changes, as I understand. I have done a quick review and Legal has verified the same with the management or developing that. Do you guys have any questions on that?
No, I don't have any questions. I think that's, that's exciting to add that, that piece in there. And then Sarah, for the, the side on the left-hand side of the highway then, with the hash marks, is there, there's an additional access space over there off the highway, right?
Um, I think that there is a parking area up here. I have to pull up the map. I apologize, I didn't have that ready to show, but we'll definitely have to figure out how managing, you know, that, that piece fits in with everything on the east side of the river or the highway.
Okay.
It, it's pretty different than the, the riverside parcels.
Okay. Yeah, I don't feel like I have any additional questions on this at all.
Yeah, just to echo that, I think that came up in earlier discussions about, you know, the management plan and thoughts for that, that with, with land on both sides of the road and the railroad right away going through there, or not, I mean, ownership, ownership, I guess. Yeah, that'll, that'll need to get figured out how to keep that safe and legal.
Yeah. And those, those conversations haven't happened. I think we were chatting briefly, Adam, the executive director of CCC and I, on starting those at the end of August. And so we will, we will be keeping you apprised of, of when those are planned, those conversations are planned and, you know, bring that, bring those back to the board on community informational items or of course, any, you know, bigger decision-making or, or work session topics that we might have to bring to the full board for vetting. Awesome. All right.
I, I will make a motion that we approve the amended easement and land management plan agreement with Colorado Central Conservancy. Did I say that right? Did I mess up?
You just swapped, Central Colorado Conservancy.
Central Colorado Conservancy, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, could you second? I'm sorry.
I was about to second until the question came up, but I'll second now.
Okay. All right, any further conversation?
No, thank you.
All right. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Didn't work done. All right, on number six. So Public Works, Michael Irwin asked for this to get on our agenda item per our procurement policies and requirements. Michael, if you could give us a little overview of your existing budget for winter treatment and, and your, your request, that'd be great.
Oh, you disappeared. So this is just a normal treatment to our dirt roads that we do every year. The budget amount is $40,000. I was just trying to pull up the actual bid that we got. I tried to get bids from at least two people. I have still not, after two weeks, gotten any response from one of them. So this is the only response I've received back. And basically, in every other year, we do different roads because it lasts about two years on the road. So we're, we're in the second year this year for these roads. There is one section of County Road 7, you'll see two places, sometimes two. The road mentioned twice. That's because I've added extra length to it this year, if possible. So the first part would be the part in Mount Massive Lakes Estates. Residential area and the next place would be to the canyon mouth, which is also residential area. It, you know, keeps the dust down and binds our roads together. It protects it from deterioration, so. That's what the bid's for, is to be able to spend that $40,000 on, on the roads.
Thanks, Michael. I don't have any other questions for you. And understand you need to make those purchases well in advance of the season. So Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns for Michael?
No, I don't think that I do right now, Michael.
Yes, it, it could be, what I was meaning to say is it could be a lot less because like the first one on the list is 26,000 square yards of County Road 7. I was able to find the list anyways. So that's 9,000, 9,000 feet, 9,700 feet. That's the whole road. So if we did that whole, whole section, the second one on the list, 4,400 square, 4,400 feet would be deleted out of there. So that's a saving of $5,000, $5,800. So.
Okay. Michael, I, I remember that, that proposal or that bid coming in at like 45. Michael, I, I remember that, that proposal or that bid coming in at like $45,000.
Last year, it might have been.
Okay.
It's got 42,000 gallons that they need to spray on it to do all of that. And so it'd be a total of $39,211 is what they bid.
Okay. Um. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve purchasing authority for meth chloride to Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
No, none for me. Thank you. Thanks for doing that, Michael.
Yeah, I'll just say thanks. You know, I know this is sort of like a routine thing that you do year after year, but appreciate you sort of bringing it forward. So it gets triggered under the purchasing policy that just came in. So thanks, thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Michael. All right. And last on our list of new business items. Hi, Ann. We have Land Use bringing us file 2110 for the Iron Mask Camp Conditional Use Permit. And you want to give us a bit of a background here? I guess I will just lay out a couple housekeeping matters. Commissioner Marcel and I were able to make that meeting. Commissioner Fiedler was not and has listened to that recording. So has heard all of the same information through the Joint Planning Commission and Board of Commissioner Conditional Use Permit Hearing. Yeah, I should have all the same information that we have to make. You've provided a statement of motion, recommendation from the Planning Commission to the board. And I, I'm well, Ann, do you have, do you want to give us any kind of summary or?
Sure, happy to. I'm happy to give the recommendation from the Planning Commission. This is for a group camp, a conditional use permit application to operate on an inholding within the San Isabel National Forest located near Turquoise Lake. And the applicant, Bryce Erlich, is requesting the ability to have two, to place two yurts in kind of a phased plan with the first yurt being put in place along with a tent camping site. And then within, he estimates about two years, he would hopefully add a second yurt. They, he is proposing summer and winter operations. However, through the research on the file, we were able to discover that a little more investigation and work with the US Forest Service and the current association, the Snowmobile Association that's grooming the road in the winter access, for winter access. Those all need a further vetting prior to winter operations. And so the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the board for conditional approval with the following conditions. And would you like me to read those into the record for you?
Uh, yes, please, I think.
It was a unanimous motion, all three members in favor of conditional approval with the following conditions. The applicant shall restrict the number of cars per reservation with a maximum number of five at any one time. Number two, the applicant shall further investigate the Forest Service requirements for winter access and obtain an appropriate permit prior to winter operations. If a permit is determined to be needed, the applicant will submit a copy to the building and Lake County Building and Land Use Department. The applicant shall follow the following requirements from Lebo Lake County Fire Rescue. Structures shall install smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Mounted fire extinguishers shall be installed in necessary locations. The owner shall develop and establish a summer evacuation area should a wildfire occur. This area shall accommodate max occupant load. Owner shall mitigate the area according to the home ignition zone. The owner shall install an emergency medical cabinet slash station in both structures. Number four, applicant will secure an agreement from the current operator maintaining winter access prior to winter operations. A copy of the agreement will be submitted to the Building and Land Use Department. Number five, applicant shall create a guest operation guide or equivalent to educate guests regarding, but not limited to fire safety, emergency plan, proper sanitation, physical requirements, and code of conduct. The applicant shall consult with Lake County Public Health Agency, Lebo Lake County Fire Rescue, and the Office of Emergency Management regarding content and provide a copy to the Building and Land Use Department for review and approval. The information shall contain a 24-hour emergency contact. Number six, fencing is discouraged. However, if used, it shall be wildlife-friendly as defined by Colorado Parks and Wildlife. The current barbed wire shall be removed and the road shall not be fenced. Number seven, approval is contingent upon compliance with the recommendations from CPW regarding removal of food items during winterization or vacancy, wildlife, attractants, and pet safety. Number eight, applicant shall gain sanitation approval from Lake County Public Health Agency prior to operations. Number nine, the operation shall not create an adverse effect on the use of the road. Number 10, the camp will not generate any type of noise disturbance, specifically nothing in an excess of 70 decibels for a continuous minute at any time of day. Number 11, all structures shall maintain a 50-foot setback from the perimeter of the parcel. Number 12, all trash containers shall be bear-proof and screened or enclosed to prohibit animal access. Number 13, fireworks are prohibited on-site. Number 14, all statements and representations made by the applicant in its application and in hearing shall be binding and considered as conditions of approval. Number 15, all outdoor fire pits shall have the ability to be secured when not in use and approved by Lebo Lake County Fire Rescue. And the only thing that I would just mention is that they additionally, the, the changes from the suggested motion that we all had through the staff report, they really went into kind of a robust conversation about the guest operation guide and doing a preparedness for guests in what to expect, what the expectation is, what the, you know, just kind of talking about that. There was a conversation with the application of using a term called glamping. It was real important within that discussion for them to just suggest maybe not using that kind of term because this is much more of a rustic setting. So it was that the operation guide having an approval, an administrative approval and review to allow for facilitation and, and coordination with other agencies to make sure that there's no missing pieces was an important aspect to the Planning Commission, as was a 24-hour contact, emergency contact number to be readily available through Building and Land Use that could be given to dispatch, not only for guests, but for anyone in the area that might notice a disturbance. So those were that, the fire pits. The applicant had talked about units that could be locked when there's a fire ban. And so the Planning Commission thought that that was a real important aspect, that those fire pits be approved by Lebo Lake County Fire Rescue and then be able to be secured in times of fire ban. So that was an additional condition that they had. And then the recommendation from the fire department to, it was a strong suggestion. They felt that it should be a requirement to have emergency medical cabinet stations available on-site. So I think that really kind of covers any deliberations that, that the Planning Commission had and any modifications to the conditions that you may not have heard previously.
Ann, this is Kayla. I just had a quick question to follow up with you on in regards to the, the winter access and it needing more vetting. Do, will, will the applicant have to come back to the Planning Commission? Or does it go under an administrative review when they go through the rest of that vetting for the winter access? And, and does that require any additional permissions or permitting from like the Forest Service then? Is that what's plotted?
Absolutely. So the, the condition is written specific to, because the entity having jurisdiction is the Forest Service as to whether or not they can get a special use permit for winter access. The winter access permit that exists for the Snowmobile Association is an outfitter and guide. Special use permit is non-transferable for, to, to another user. So if in talking to the, the Forest Service, the applicant needs to go through, potentially go through that same process to be able to get their own special use permit. And so the condition is that they provide proof of that prior to winter operations.
Um, Ann, did the applicant have, I remember from the conversation, the applicant just had one request for, sorry, the increase of the number of vehicles allowed per reservation to be five rather than four. Was there any other comments that the applicant gave to you as staff after the final motion from the Planning Commission?
So the Planning Commission decided that that was a reasonable request, and so the condition is for five. And in talking with the applicant, he thought that that would very much meet the needs and he agreed the thought of, you know, limiting the amount of, the, of the number of vehicles during reservations would help in being considerate of the use of the road and impacts to the road. So the applicant was, was very pleased with five versus four. And, and so that is what the Planning Commission recommended.
Okay. I, I, I would like just to say that I feel like that, um, that requirement, I mean, it's great. The applicant is happy with that. And per reservation is certainly different than, you know, five vehicles up there, period. But I, I, I wonder if that's not more an operational decision rather than a land use decision, because I feel like we're trying to address the impact of a Forest Service road that's out of our jurisdiction, which was also something that was mentioned. And you mentioned that as, as staff, you know, there was questions to you of, of how to maybe encourage or get some idea of, of the routine maintenance or increase that maintenance. Should that have to be the case? And you replied with, you know, that's, that's the Forest Service jurisdiction. And I, I know that they would be working with, you know, with that landowner, with Bryce in this case. And I think they had scheduled to do maintenance on that road every three years. And if, if it's something that the Forest Service can't, you know, it doesn't have the capacity to do, then they certainly entertain that kind of cost share and effort agreement for a property owner to perhaps take care of that per their regulations on the section of road that's through his property. But I, I, I was curious to see what the applicant's response was. Because I, that was one thing where I was kind of feeling like perhaps we should make more general language of, you know, applicant should be really considerate of, you know, amount of traffic and whatnot, rather than a specific number.
We have, absolutely. I, I, I would just mention that it is not unusual for us to, you know, in other applications for group camps, and we have had like recommendations for limiting the amount of traffic. So it is, like you said, it is operational in nature for the, the conditional use permit. The impact, you know, that we've noted, I don't think it's all just for the road. I think it's also, it also felt when we had the discussion that it provided more of a harmonious balance with the natural environment and, and surrounding land uses. So I think that, you know, we, we talked about the road a bit in, within this condition. And I think because we received a letter from an adjacent property owner concerned about that. So I think that the kind of evolution of the condition and with staff's conversation with the applicant was focused a bit strongly on the road, but also it was within just kind of the harmonious balance between the natural environment and the impacts of, of the operational use under conditional use permit. So I think, and, and I don't think that there's any pushback at all from the applicant. My, my impression is that he readily agreed that he thought that that might be a good way to find that balance. And also, you know, I think that we will, there was also kind of a discussion between all of us, the applicant, the Planning Commission and staff, is that we, I think we will see a growing number of interest in, in doing these kinds of group camps and kind of setting maybe an expectation of what we would like to see kind of throughout, although every application is unique. So we, we have limited anything having to do with traffic on, on quite a few different conditional use permits, but, but certainly, absolutely, the road overall is, we do have that Schedule AA agreement for maintenance and, and, but it is a Forest Service road and, and he will have to go through the permitting process in order to have winter access, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah. I, I can appreciate that argument. And I also think it's, it's something that's going to change as more interest. I mean, he's right around the, the existing campgrounds and kind of dispersed camping in that kind of area. So it's a bit of a moving target, but thanks, thanks for that summary.
I, I'd, I'd one suggestion for, I think, a very small addition to condition five on the guest operation guide, which is just to add in. So, so provision five has the list of things that would be included. And I think including sort of road safety and conditions might be good to list in there. So I think just adding, you know, there, there's that list, fire safety, emergency plan, et cetera, et cetera. And then add, you know, and road safety and conditions. I have a question again, sort of on this topic with that condition nine, to, as I was hearing the discussion, I wasn't sure. Like, I, I, maybe it's supposed to cover both, but as I read number nine, it says not creates an adverse effect. And I wasn't sure if it meant more like on like traffic and sort of public safety on a public road, or if it meant adverse effect on the road the physical road condition, you know, like if people try to get up there in my season and tear it up. I, I wasn't sure if it like meant to apply to both, or in which case we can believe it as it is, or if we want to be clear on what they're being held to in nine.
So number nine, within the body of, of the discussion in the staff report, came from Public Works. And, and their recommendations was that there be no adverse impact to the road. And I do think it was both. I think it was in creating any kind of adverse action that would negatively impact the road, but also access, that they wouldn't block the road, you know, with parking and, and such, so that access wouldn't be limited for other users. So I think it was twofold, but certainly if you have a suggestion for better wording on that, to be more specific, happy to look for that modification. And I did make a note at number five in, in case you would like to make a motion with the road safety and conditions as well.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay leaving, I'm, and for discussion, I'm, I'm okay leaving nine as is, given the record that's there. And, and it can sort of apply to both.
Um, Ann, I had a question, understanding that the fire and rescue would permit through the ordinance, like a three-by-three area. the ordinance, like a three by three area. And in listening to the recording again today, the determination of what kind of fire pit was not made, that, that operational decision. So I'm wondering if that language for the ability to be secured is problematic.
Certainly. What, what would you suggest? I think what they, you probably heard, you, there was a manufacturer term, manufacturer term that Bryce used for the type of fire pit that he had thought about, which has the ability to be locked to keep, you know, so the idea was that, that that was, I think, specifically what he was looking at using or something very similar to that. I think he referenced a brand name. And so they very much liked that idea and just wanted to memorialize it and again thought it might be kind of a, kind of creating maybe an operational standard for other uses that might look to come under conditional use permit. So happy to reword that, that was an amended or an additional condition that we kind of wordsmithed a bit at the, during deliberation. So happy to adjust it if, if there's something that makes better sense.
I think I was just landing on outdoor fire pits shall be approved by Levee Lake County Fire Rescue. I, I didn't take away the same kind of decision that the applicant had on what product he was able to or wanted to get, but that would be my suggestion. I'm happy to hear what the board thinks. I think it's great that there's a product out there that has a dome and a cap. That's really interesting, but. And I think, so are there two suggested changes or additions?
So the, the changes were number 15, the addition to number, excuse me, there was also an addition to number six. The barbed wire that exists, it was, the Planning Commission very much felt that that needed to be removed because it was a hazard. And Planning Commission member felt that, that direction should be given, that the road should not be fenced. So number six had that modification, that last sentence, the current barbed wire shall be removed and the road should not be fenced. Number five, regarding the guest operation guide, the last, very, very last portion of this sentence for review and approval, they just felt that there should be a review of the operation guide prior to it being put into commission. And they did feel that that could be an administrative process. And then the information shall contain the 24-hour emergency contact. That was added for the benefit of both guests as well as anybody that might notice something happening on-site. The emergency medical cabinet and station not being a suggestion and rather a requirement. And those were the only changes that were added as a result of deliberations.
So it sounds like, personally, I do like Commissioner Fiedler's suggestion for road conditions to be included in that operational guide or, or whatever communications on, you know, on your visit or a link to road conditions through the Forest Service. Road condition, access to road condition, current road conditions, I guess, or, or maybe do you mean Jeff, that it's kind of just a explicitly like this is a steep, narrow, yeah, just.
I think more of that, I mean, you know, some, some language in there, yes, that the, you know, the, this is not a weekly graded.
Yeah.
No, this is not County Road 36. This is, you know, you know, whatever the right, I mean, I don't know if it really needs high clearance vehicles. It's been a while since I've been up there. But yeah, just sort of some, so people don't go up there in a two-wheel drive, you know, whatever, and get stuck. And then, you know, and then don't park on the side of the road, like, you know.
So I added, just after code of conduct, I just added one other, the road safety and conditions, just at the very end of that sentence. And I think that also we've built in the administrative approval so that we can take the guide in, send it out as we do, you know, to the same referral agencies as well as the board and just, you know, come back with a final draft for them to use. So we will have that ability to revisit this and look at this prior to it being utilized for operations.
I think I'd like to pull the board, I mean, I'd like to suggest just the removal of some of that language on 15, just to sim, more simply state, fire pits shall be approved by Lake County Fire and Rescue. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I think with those two board suggestions, are there any other changes or suggestions or questions?
I don't think so. I think those suggestions fit well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all good.
All right. Well, okay, so I will, sorry, entertain a motion to approve file number 2110 as read into the record by Land use staff with an addition of road conditions to condition five and, and removal of some language in condition 15 to have a final read of all outdoor fire pits shall be approved by the LLCFR.
Oh, no.
All right.
Good.
Any, any further discussion?
We need a second.
I, I think I said second in there somewhere after.
I did not hear you on, on my end, sorry.
All right. No further discussion?
No, thank you.
Does that sound good, Ann? You got, got the, okay. Excellent. All right. All those in favor, aye.
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 Great. Hi, Paul. All right. And that with the completion of item number seven, that concludes our meeting. We don't have bills, payroll, or minutes to review for this meeting. And anything else from the board or I'll open again for a public, public comment opportunity?
I don't think so. Nothing for me. Thank you.
Great. All right. I don't see any hands being raised for other comments. And at, so at 2:35, we will adjourn. Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.